All right, good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM here at the Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannis.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchek.
Here.
Member Weiner is absent. And member Hughes?
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide a public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in the basket over there on that table to my far right. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. All right, we're going to start off tonight with a truth in taxation hearing. This is a public hearing on the 2022 property tax levy. At this time, I declare the hearing open to allow members of the audience to comment on the topic. But first, I'm going to go ahead and have Mr. Dodd-Treyfall make a brief comment.
This is the second year in a row that the district has gone through the truth and taxation hearing process. Truth and taxation is when the levy for property taxes that we use for the operation of the district exceeds 105% of the prior year's extension of the amount that we were going to collect. Doesn't mean that that's all the money we're going to get. We don't know what the actual valuation will be. We actually don't know that until March or April, when county clerks let us know what that is, along with what we're going to be receiving. But because of the CPI being at the 5%, well, actually, CPI last year was at 7%. We're capped at the 5% level, and we are unsure of what the new property and the overall EAV will be. The estimation is an increase of about 6.6%. Again, county clerk brings it down accordingly once they have all the information and collect all the valuation and so forth. So that's the purpose for the hearing. In all likelihood, might be doing this again next year as CPI continues to be up in that 7-plus percent range on a month-by-month, year-to-year basis. So with that, if there's any questions?
Thank you. I'll start with the board. I know we've talked about this a couple of different times, but if there's any questions for Todd at this time, otherwise I will go to the public. Thank you, Todd. All right, then, anyone wishing to be heard, please stand, come up to the podium, state your name, attendance area, or organization, if any, for the record, and please provide your comment. All right, then, if there are no comments tonight, I now declare the hearing closed at 7:03 PM. This time, I'd like to welcome El Sierra School. And we have the student council here with us tonight. I'd like to welcome you up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Just wanted to let everyone know we'll be doing the pledge in English and then in Spanish right after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all lay our gods out in the air to the sun of C.O.C. America. Their blood, their blood, their red and white, 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 their red and white.
Very good.
Excellent.
I would like to introduce our student council representatives. We have our sponsors. We have Tricia Corsi, and then Chris Marquez, and then our student council officers. We have Molly, we have Bella, Coraline, and Cora. So if they could come up here, they're going to be able to give our presentation.
El Sierra was able to return to the traditional elections that have been held in the past. We, along the other three candidates, gave speeches to the students in grades third through six. They then voted, and the four of us were very excited to be elected.
One of the best things about being in student council is planning the spirit days. Some of our favorites so far this year have been silly hat and hair day, crazy sock day, and red, white, and blue day for Veterans Day. We are looking forward to pajama day and just like you teacher day.
A special tradition we have at El Sierra is our Bobcat Friday. Two Fridays a month, students are encouraged to wear their Bobcat gear or blue or yellow. We check in on each class to see which classroom had the most participation. That class is announced at the end of the day and has the honor of displaying our Bobcat flag until the next winner is announced.
El Sierra students really enjoy helping others. Earlier this year, we sponsored Socktober and collected 119 pairs of new socks to be donated to Sharing Connections. We are currently collecting new mittens and hats for our annual mittens tree. Later in the year, we will sponsor our Super Bowl. Students will bring in food donations and place in the box that supports their favorite team to win the Super Bowl. We always like to see which team El Sierra picks to win the big game.
Now, I'd like to introduce our PTA officers. We have Brianne Harris and Nina Miller.
So this past fall, we had our fun run, and that was one of our biggest, most successful fundraisers. I think we had about 150 participants in the actual fun run, which was awesome for our little school.
Okay, we have really enjoyed having our activities, our in-person activities, happening again. We were able to do the ice cream social that kicked off the year, and then also held the Freaky Friday for Halloween, and we actually just had our Breakfast with Santa and Book Fair event on Saturday. And we have had such an overwhelming amount of families, students and families participate that we've actually run out of ice cream, which is a good thing to have such huge participation. And our ice cream, our Halloween party, we had a line winding around the entire gym just to get into our amazing haunted house that our dads, who actually were brought to us by Mr. Lynn and his dogs, DOGS program, and they put together an amazing haunted house that scared a few of the small children. But that's okay. And then we just had our, what is, oh, birthday books. So every other month, all of the students at El Sierra get to select a book that they would like to pick as a birthday present from the PTA. We support that with our book fair, and we actually just had a successful book fair on Saturday coinciding with our Breakfast with Santa. We've also decided that we don't want to charge for fun lunch, and the PTA pays for our entire school to have free fun lunch. And because of our success with the fun run, we've been able to add even more free fun lunches throughout the course of the year so that no child has to feel bad because they can't afford to participate in fun lunch. We just got two brand-new basketball hoops that can be raised and lowered. We've had the same basketball hoops that I believe were installed when our school was built. So we just got new basketball hoops installed over, I think it was Thanksgiving break, and you can see a picture of one of them. There's one on both sides. And now, when we have the Harlem Wizards, is that who it is, come and visit us to promote the event that's taking place in January, we don't have to worry as much for them breaking our backboards as they slam dunk during the assembly.
Thank you. Thank you. I like this part because this is where we get to brag about some of the things we have at El Sierra. We're very excited that we have lots of great leaders, as you saw here with our sixth graders. And one of the things we like to have is our sixth graders lead at the beginning of the year how to do our recess games. So they'll go into each of the classrooms and have the students come outside and teach all of our younger students how to play different games. We feel that if everybody knows the rules, there's no reason to break them, right? We also have recess leaders, and our sixth graders and fifth graders volunteer their time during recess to play the different games with our first graders, kindergartners, and our second graders. There's a picture there of our sixth graders doing the recess rodeo on the left, and the one on the right is our sixth graders playing duck, duck, goose with some of our kindergarten students during their recess time. We're also very proud of our watchdogs program. The dog stands for dads of great students or any other positive male role model that a student might have in their life. Those gentlemen come to our school on Wednesdays and volunteer their time. We had such a big turnout for our pizza night, as you can see that one picture there, that we decided to have it be a half-day program. So one dad will come in the morning and the one in the afternoon, so we get double the amount of male participants. But then also, the real benefit for the students is they get an interaction with a positive male role model throughout the course of their day. For a lot of the dads that come in, they talk about being in an open school. A lot of people have never experienced that before, so for them to be able to see it in action, they gain a lot of respect for what we're doing within our school, but they also get to work with classrooms throughout each of the different grade levels, not just their own child's classroom. And that's been a benefit, too, because a lot of times, the dads will say that they see a lot of the students in the neighborhood, and now they know their name, and they kind of feel like celebrities in the community, which is pretty cool. We've had a tradition of having our volleyball game of students versus staff every spring. I'm very proud to say that we're able to continue that even during the pandemic. Last year, we tried to do a livestream so that parents could watch it that year, but honestly, it's been nice to be able to have a lot of in-person events back happening there. We're also very proud of our school families. That's a social-emotional learning program that we have at El Sierra, where each staff member has a family of students that are all the way from kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, where we meet with them once a month, doing different types of social-emotional learning activities this year. Our theme is kindness, so we're doing lots of activities with that. The neat part about that is each adult has that same family throughout the student's course of time throughout El Sierra. So when our seventh grader, or sixth graders become seventh graders, we get a new kindergartner that next year, and then we write letters to our seventh graders at O'Neil wishing them luck and trying to find out how they like their new experiences in middle school. So it's kind of a neat connection. Students love it, and so does our staff. This year is our first year of having the entire elementary program of dual language in one building in our district. We're excited to say that it's El Sierra. Well, El Sierra has housed dual language, or parts of the dual language program over the year. This needs to have kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. The neat part about that is the collaboration that's able to happen for our dual language teachers, as well as us being able to have the two-way program this year, which is starting at El Sierra for our kindergarten students. And that's been neat to see, a two-way program, as I know the board knows, but for those of you in the audience, it's a program where we have native English speakers with native Spanish speakers, all learning Spanish and English together. It's been neat to be able to see that group do some amazing things so far this year already. We brought back our family reading night after the pandemic, and this was exciting because we put a new twist on it this year. The first one was that we broke it up into two parts. So instead of having a whole school reading night, we decided to have a primary reading night in November, and then an intermediate reading night that's going to be happening in January. And that was based off of the amount of turnout that we've had at a lot of our events this year. We wanted it to be something where parents could not feel too crowded in one big space. The other part that we added to it was adding the part to our school improvement plan, where we wanted to go over different reading strategies that families could do at home. So our reading specialist, Mrs. Dupass, led a parent session. While that was happening in the gym, the students were with their teachers doing read-alouds in the classroom. And then we had traditional activities after that, like a book exchange and a scavenger hunt, and families could also read books throughout the whole school. So it was a big hit. We look forward to having the second part of that with our intermediate students in January. New to El Sierra this year is our Bobcat badges, and this is a positive behavior incentive program we have for students, where as we catch students doing something positive, any adult in the school is able to give our students, you'll see a little cutout there of a Bobcat badge. We got this idea from our friends over at Lester. They have something very similar. So we talked with them and got some of the information, and then made it into our Bobcat badges, and that's been a couple of weeks in the making. And it's been neat to be able to see students getting the badges, putting them into a big bucket that we have in the library, and then each week, I pull a few of the names out, and the students win prizes and things like that. So the kids are excited about it, but it's neat to have students come up to me and tell me, "Mr. Lynn, I earned a badge today." So it's just, that sense of pride is really cool to be able to see. And then we have certificates the students will be getting, too, when they get their name pulled. And then we're working on a way to be able to display all of the badges at some point throughout the course of the year, too. We have a couple of bulletin boards that I think will be some points of pride for us to be able to use, too. Moving into the academic area, one of the things that I've been impressed at El Sierra this year, and really the last few years, is our instructional leadership team. And that's our staff members who volunteer to be a part of our school improvement process. Using the cycle of inquiry, we take a lot of deep looks into our data. One of the things that we spent a lot of time at at the beginning of the summer and throughout the course of summer is looking at our MAP data. And as you can see within there, we have the green dot, which means we're in that good area with math, the L dot meaning we need a little bit of help here with reading. And that's one of the things that we really wanted to spend a lot of time focusing on over the summer was what are some ways that we want to be able to improve not only our reading scores on MAP, but really from what we're seeing in the classroom so that that can translate onto our assessments that we take, too. So I'll get into that in just a few minutes as we look at some of other pieces of data here. When we took a look at our IAR data, we had, saw a little bit higher scores in terms of where things were ranked right there, where we could still see that while math is a strength, reading was still a relative strength right there, but it showed us that there were some commonalities between MAP and IAR that we wanted to really focus on reading this year. That means, obviously, we're going to have a strong focus on math like we normally would, but in terms of our school improvement goals, we chose to have two reading goals this year. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail after this next slide. As you all know, we got, all the schools in Illinois had their summit of ratings, and El Sierra fell within the commendable range, where we're proud of that, but we're not satisfied. And where we want to be is in that exemplary threshold, and our overall score was at 78.93, so we're just under four points away from being in the exemplary threshold. And so we took a look at what can we improve upon in that rating right there in order to get up to where we want to be. And some of the things that I know Dr. Russell's talked to a lot of the principals about were things that we fell in the same boat, and really looking at some of the easy points, if you will, for us to be able to improve on, that climate survey. All of our students are given the assessment to be able to take, but realizing that that is something that counts as points towards that overall summit of designation, and making sure that every student, even the ones who are absent, have the opportunity to take that survey would be one way to be able to do that. Just like, for example, if a student wasn't there for the IAR, we make sure that all the students take that within the designated timeframe. Having that same accountability for the climate survey would be something we want to be able to do. While we got all of the points that were available for proficiency in ELA in math, we know that we can still get better with that. When we take a look at our growth areas in math and in reading, those are two areas there where, while we had some of the points, we felt we can capture a bit more with some of the growth that we want to be able to get. The other thing that's kind of the elephant in the room there is the chronic absenteeism, and that's something where, you know, all schools face a lot of different challenges with that, so we're no different, but really having those conversations with families about, you know, if there's students out, there's lots of reasons for that, but really being empathetic to that, but also just really reinforcing the importance of students being at school. So those are two areas there that we want to make sure that we really focus on, and then looking at that area of growth. When we take a look at our school improvement goals, we continued our school goal from last year in reading, and that was at the K to 2 level, looking at our foundational skills. We wanted to be able to continue to improve that, but then also with our intermediate grades, working with vocabulary. While we saw improvement in those areas, as we looked at that data a little bit more, we didn't want to just check it off and say move on to the next area. And so what we decided to be able to do this year was to continue having our small foundational skills meeting within our primary groups, where that's a fluid amount of students that go from group to group, depending on as their levels increase throughout each few weeks. So that individualized, or I should say, that differentiated support that students are getting foundational skills, we wanted to keep building off of that, but really having that focus with vocabulary. And vocabulary goes beyond just the bold-faced words, and that's really been our emphasis as a staff this year, is that vocabulary is in all aspects of our students' education, taking advantage of going over background knowledge with students and not assuming that everybody has the same background knowledge, but truly trying to level that playing field so the students can access the vocabulary, and it helps them to better understand all that they're expected to be reading within their texts as well. And the rationale from behind that was really going another look in our scores, but then we also spent a lot of time, how do we get better at this as a staff, so utilizing our professional learning Mondays as well as our faculty meetings. We've had our reading specialists, our library, our teacher librarian, and myself going over the importance of each of these areas, having teachers have brief little discussions, and then being able to implement those strategies within the classroom. It's been exciting to see that these last two years. Our second goal that we, based off of the data we wanted to improve upon, is in the area of informational text. And in talking with our teacher librarian and our teachers, our students really do enjoy reading nonfiction, so it goes beyond that, but it really goes into all the information that is on the text. The reason why the author put this picture on this page, taking a look at the graphs and the charts that are in there, the vocabulary that goes along with all that information in there, but then also taking a look at what informational text-type questions look like on the assessments that students take, not only in benchmark, but also on the IAR and in math, I'm sorry, in a MAP, and making sure that our students understand that this type of question is one that I do have to go back in the text and look at that chart that they're, that chart is not there just as a visual break because I'm reading text, it's actually there because we can get a lot of information from that, and then being able to analyze that information to be able to answer some of these questions. So those are some of the things that our teachers are working hard with our students. And the other part about that is when we have our reading nights with our families, going over strategies that our families can use for read-alouds that they do with their own children, teachers modeling that within the classroom, really taking those breaks as some of those visuals come up, putting those up on the overhead projector, I'm dating myself here, up on the Apple TV with the iPad. I'm certainly thinking, sorry, James. We don't have any overheads, I promise. All our ink ran out, no. But the neat part about that is just taking advantage of tools that we have within the classroom with, you know, being able to walk in and see teachers doing that with some of the read-alouds, or using the benchmark materials that we have. This is, you know, there's a lot of nonfiction-heavy resources that we have at our disposal, utilizing those for part of our school goals, and being able to see some of the successes are huge for us. But then also, when we have our parent nights, when we have our reading night, having our reading specialist go over just some strategies that parents can use with their children at home, and that was a lot of feedback that we received at the end of last year, is what are some things that we can do to help your school? And for our school to get better, it takes all of us. And I know that there's a plan that we have here each month, and right now, on this Wednesday at our faculty meeting, our reading specialist and our teacher librarian is going to be going over a lot of high-interest, nonfiction texts that our teachers will be able to utilize as read-alouds after winter break within their classrooms. And that's going to help with our informational text piece right there. I'm not going to go month by month because I know everybody can read that, but it's really just having a focus and having a plan. I've been in this district for a really long time, and I feel like our school improvement process is living and breathing so much better. Early on, I can honestly remember it would be something that we would make at the beginning of the year and hope that our goals got better by the end of the year. The amount of time and effort that our teachers are putting into this, the amount of time and effort that our parents are willing to put in this, really makes it that much more worthwhile as we start to see these goals being achieved. So I know that we talk about goals going from the boardroom to the classroom, but I also think a lot of our schools are also extending that into the living room of families because they want to be a part of it, too, and that's what I'm seeing at El Sierra, and I'm excited about that. And our two main rules at El Sierra are to be nice and do your best. So we end with that, but thank you very much, and I'm very proud of our staff and our students here, so thank you, guys, too. We want to thank everybody from El Sierra for being here today, and for our student council members. We have some gifts for you. So thank you.
And I have to say, you guys may win the best dressed award, too. Even the headbands coordinator makes a nice shout.
Thanks again. All right, listed on tonight's agenda is one communication received by the board. Are there any additional communication board members would like to share at this time? All right, and that brings us to the spotlight on our school. Tonight, it's going to be on capital planning. Todd, you're back up.
Yes, we have friends this time. So this is a group effort. I started out and turn it over to others. So this is the time of year that we would always start talking about facilities, next steps moving on in the next fiscal year as we start that process really in earnest when we come back from Christmas, from holiday break. This year, we're very, very fortunate, having had a very successful referendum passage, and that we're moving into a kind of a new era and a new reality for the next several years for the district as we work to execute on those items that we put forth with the voters for the sale. So, James, if you could go to the next page. Oh, I have a thing.
Give you the power, this is.
Yes.
Children are honored. They don't usually even give that to me.
They didn't tell me, so I... So we'll start out, though, because it's going, we'll talk about the timeline for that capital work in a minute. I do want to talk about what we have planned for the summer of '23. Just because we need this time to plan and to work through all of the detailed pieces for that large amount doesn't mean we will be not sitting around doing, you know, not having a lot working, a lot going on this summer. We will. Fortunately, in this last budget, the funds that have been approved through the state, through the DCO grants for playgrounds, were approved and are accessible for us for a number of our schools. Not all of them yet. We still have a few that haven't been approved, and hopefully those will come in the next year. We have abatement work pending the approval, waiting for the notice on the state maintenance grant. State maintenance grant is a $50,000 match from the state, the district. This will be a little bit more on the district side, taking some advantage of doing some of that work and continually working to do asbestos abatement in the basement of Puffer. We also have some projects remaining from last summer, where we had everything put in except for the chips that were delayed so many weeks due to supply chain issues for the fire alarm systems. So we then turned on and hooked up the old fire alarm system. It has made it through the year so far, and this summer, we will then finish that work and complete it by switching over to the new system, as well as complete some of the masonry work that was planned and started in summer of '22. So we wanted to show the board and the community just how much in funding we're getting from the state and how much our community is locally fundraising. The $1.8 million total estimated project cost, that is a number likely to go up. The only absolute number on this table is the state grant. Those don't increase or decrease. Those are set in statute, and that is what is available for us in funding for those projects, and they are very specific to site and the work being done. We know, and is on the board agenda for this evening, a number of donation acceptances for the board from groups that have been raising funds. Those are in there so that we can then start that process. We're ordering the equipment for those to get installed and then going forth with putting out and preparing the bids to go out on the street to bid for that work and for those to be rewarded at, is it January meeting that we plan to do that? to be rewarded at, is it January meeting that we plan to do that or February? Some, some of them will come back in January for approval. So we know that, you know, depending upon on how those bids come in, also how some of that fundraising is continually working and going, that some of that total project cost could, could increase. This is where we're going to have the team effort. We're going to bring in Amy and Peter from White and from Bullion Andrews to start, and Kevin, to start to talk about the next steps in what is going on and going forward as part of the referendum piece. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
So just as a quick review for the referendum work, basically there's four distinct areas of focus, three, and then kind of some follow-up building maintenance items. So the first major one is the additions to the middle schools to move sixth grade over. That'll probably be the quickest thing that we get going. The second is the HVAC mechanical updates to all buildings. And the final bucket was the safe and secure entrances, followed by the specific building maintenance updates for the remainder of the work. So just wanted to touch base on that in this slide as a refresher from where Amy and Peter are going to talk about next.
We, every once in a while, people have been, you're moving very quickly. I'm like, well, we've got a lot of work to do and we're behind getting it and we want to, you know, we want to, we've got a window, we want to get these things going. The bond sale did take place and as the board is well aware, we ended up with rates under 4%. We, it is always good to be prepared and move ahead. We were able to take advantage of an opportunity in the market where after the election, the rates improved from prior to the November election. And the week that we actually, we went out, they improved from the, the week before. They've gone up a little bit since. Next week, they may go down again. The rates that we have were 3.39 as the number that the IRS looks at, all-inclusive of costs. And if the long years aren't refinanced at all, it's about a 3.89%. So under the 4% that we were looking at in the weeks earlier, in the weeks up, leading up to the, the election when, you know, things were above 4%. At that point, I'm going to turn it over to, to Amy and Peter.
Thanks, Todd. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Amy Tiberia. I'm with White and Company. I'm a senior project manager over at White. I will be District 58's lead architect on the project. I will be here from the very beginning now, all the way through the end. In fact, I've been kind of in the background all the way through the project and pre-referendum to help support. I am very vested in the community and District 58. I've worked with, with you guys in the past on the Leicester addition. I am a community member. I live in the Leicester community. I grew up in the area and graduated from Downers Grove South High School. And I was District 99's lead architect as well for just the, the referendum projects that just recently finished. Very excited to be here with all of you. I'm going to give you a little bit of a background on the next steps for the referendum from a design side. We have started kind of preliminary survey work. We are completing scans of both of the middle schools because of the size project that we're doing and the additions going on there, having the buildings scanned as well as working on some survey work. We are working on getting, undergoing and, and getting some site surveys, which I believe is on the agenda for approval to, this evening, to look at the, both of the middle schools and get that work going. That's in conjunction with village approval process. And we are also starting to talk with the village about the traffic studies that will be required at both middle schools and what that might entail in hiring an expert to, to look at that from a traffic. And first, we want to understand what the village will be looking at before we go into contract with a specialty consultant for those traffic studies. We're going to be working with the district and the community and staff on visioning sessions at the end of January and the beginning of February to understand the needs as far as the priorities for the group. This planning process, as, as many of you are aware of, has gone on for several years. And so before we in earnest start designing, we want to hear from the community and staff and, and students too, about what the priorities are for these large additions and the overall project as a whole. And then we are, will be working in partner with your CM, Bullion Andrews, to align the budget and scope to again confirm where we stand, we started off with. We know the community approved $179 million and we, we just want to make sure that everything aligns before moving forward. We're looking to start a major design work at the beginning of March, so that would happen immediately following that, that budget and scope alignment. That's after the visioning session, so by then we'd have our priorities, we'd have our, our budget and scope in place and we can move forward on the design. Permitting would happen fall of 2023 for potential start of construction, summer of, or spring, summer of '24 with targeted completion dates for the start of the '26, '27 school year for all projects. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter over at Bullion Andrews to talk a little bit more on the construction side.
I'm Peter Kuhn with Bullion Andrews, Vice President of our Education Group. I will really be involved heavily from day one until product completion, really overseeing the overall referendum project to make sure it's an overall success for the entire community. Really just high leveling, as Amy said, we are really going to use the next 10 months to set up the product for success. So design, doing a lot of site investigations to make sure that when we start construction, it can run smoothly and that we procure all materials on a yearly basis to make sure that we don't have any procurement issues and that, you know, students and staff are within their classrooms on day one prior to start a school each year. So overall, really, we're breaking it down, I would call it two separate products right now. It's the middle school additions that we plan to break ground in spring of '24. So we'll utilize the next 10 months from a design standpoint. We'll be coming back to the board in, you know, late of '23 for those award recommendations. And then really, once the weather breaks, we would be starting those additions in the spring of '24, really targeting overall addition completion in August of '24. And then we would utilize that next summer, summer of '26 to really kind of renovate and bring all the additions and existing school together as one. And then our plan is right now is to utilize each of the summers, really break it down. Most likely, we would do four schools each summer. So four, four schools, summer of '24, four schools, summer of '25, and then three schools, summer of '26. What we're trying to do is group all similar work together to minimize the impact that we're doing at each of those schools. So instead of trying to do projects at each school each summer, we're trying to minimize our impact and try to complete as much work as possible to really minimize the impact of staff, students and the surrounding community. With the overall target completions of fall of '26, and then really, we still have that one-year buffer of 2027 to wrap up any of the referendum work. So that's really a high-level, overall construction and referendum schedule at this point.
And then I have the last slide. Throughout the process that led up to the decision of focusing in our facilities with our strategic plan, after that with the citizen task force, and certainly determining whether we go to a referendum or not, we've involved the community at every step. And when I say community, I'm not only talking about our families and the board, I'm talking about our staff members as well. And we're committed to continuing that as we go through the construction phase of this project. So prior to finalizing designs with White and Company and Bullion Andrews, one of the things we think it's very important is to sit down with our staff and to sit down with our community and talk about these big projects. You know, for instance, secured entrances or gymnasiums or science labs, you know, and the list goes on. Show examples of modern work that we've done and then get feedback prior to the architects finalizing the design. We think that's very important. I think one of the worst things that can happen is we get to the end and people go, you know, what were they thinking or why did it look like this? But to really get those themes out in the open, have some public discussions on those so that way when White and Bullion Andrews go to work on those things, they have all those themes, you know, in their head. They have the feedback from the school board, they also have the feedback from the citizen task force and then the strategic planning group. And so again, I, I want to reassure our staff and I want to reassure our community that involvement, feedback is a very appropriate course of action to continue on. We've had a lot of success with that and we want to continue that. Also, as we get to, you know, finalizing construction, that's where we would also deploy things like user groups. So, you know, as we're finalizing the science labs, it makes a lot of sense to get the principals and to get our science teachers together to make sure that things are located in the rooms in the right spot. You know, doing things like that will go a long way when we open the schools up, when they're all finalized. Also, to do this, we're going to continue to modify our calendar over the years to make sure that we create the longest window possible for construction. So ideally, we'd like to carve out 12 weeks in the summer. I'm not sure we could always get to 12 weeks, but certainly want to continue to target 10 weeks. And then also look for opportunities in the calendar year in, in terms of maybe we can do something over winter break or a project over spring break. Throughout my career, I've always tried to utilize those timeframes to do quick projects, even if a project means setting things up for the summer so they, they can hit the ground running. So we've been talking a lot about those things as well. And what you can anticipate is each year, we're going to bring that calendar back to you and then really try and stretch this summer as much as we can. In terms of taking the breaks, we're still committed to trying to keep those two weeks at winter break and a, in a full week of spring break, but really looking at how we're doing in terms of two days and other things a little bit differently to make sure that we can maximize that summer schedule. So rather than getting out, you know, the second week in June, I think our families can be a little more accustomed to around Memorial Day, as close as possible, and then trying to push that August time back as far as we can, but still get in the required days during the school year. So we're, again, we're looking forward to continue to engage the community. Now that the bonds have been sold, I think what the board and what the community is going to see is this planning process is really going to continue to pick up steam. We're excited about it. Things are happening behind the scenes, as Amy alluded to. We've already had people scanning the outside of our buildings. Next week over winter break, they'll be inside of our buildings and so things are moving and moving a long way according to schedule. We will continue to update the board. You know, obviously at board meetings, but through Megan with Communicate 58 and through other ways like social media in terms of our progress that we're making. And I would encourage people, when those community engagement sessions become available, to really consider attending those. Also, I want to reassure the community, especially around O'Neill and Herrick, when we're talking about parking and traffic, that the community will be involved in that process. That's a process that is not done solely by the school district. We have to do it in conjunction with the village. And so we will be working closely with the village. And I think our community can expect a similar process to what District 99 would have done, especially around North High, when they, you know, changed the way Prince Street, you know, used to go through. Now it doesn't anymore, changing parking lots, those types of things. We will continue to make sure that the neighbors are involved in that process as well.
Dr. Russell, a quick question, since you were talking about it here. We, we often already hear about our timeframe in which we release our school calendar. If we're going to be, but they tend to be pretty steady.
Yep.
Is there any possibility that we could look at escalating that process a little bit, get that, that out to the community a little bit quicker, if nothing else in draft form, so people can complain accordingly? Because if, if there's some days, days off in the year that we may be removing to the length in that summer or even the end of the school year, anything that we can do, I think, to alleviate that pressure on families would be better?
Yeah, I think it's a very fair question, one that we do hear from the community. And two things moving forward, now that the referendum has passed, obviously that's why the calendar is delayed now and will ask for approval in January. I would expect that process to be rolled up, you know, so we're doing that in November and in December at the latest, maybe even sooner. The other thing that we want to work closely with Bullion Andrews on, just like 99, and what most districts have, have done is now they have a, a two-year tentative calendar. I always want to throw out that word tentative because things can change in construction, but giving our family more of a heads up, you know, not only one year out, but two years out and be more aligned with what the high school is doing. I've stated throughout our, our pitches on the referendum that the ultimate goal is to align our calendar with District 99. That would be the administration's recommendation and then really have a K-12 calendar through the community. But we are looking at rolling this process again forward by a couple of months next year and then also really strongly considering a two-year tentative calendar, just to get those dates out for everyone.
Appreciate it.
I have an easy question, a hard question. My easy question is...
Ooh, hard question first.
The, in terms of the phases of, of the middle school work, just as, as a curiosity, when will be the, when will be the first school year when sixth graders will be enrolled at the middle schools?
So what we have said is we are targeting the fall of 2026. It's a very conservative target, which would mean the current second graders would be that first group A. We've been very consistent about that. We've also said, if we can, we'd like to roll that up. I just can't commit to that as a community. So we said a very, very aggressive, maybe not a likely, calendar could be this year's third graders. In reality, we did say this year's second graders. Now, as we're having conversations, one of the things that Peter alluded to was that, and Peter, please jump in if I'm getting into these dates wrong because I'm speaking from memory, but the fall of '25, you would see the completion of the middle school addition, right? That's the target. Whether or not that can be ready to go on day one, we're not certain yet. We need to continue to look at that because middle school additions, that work can take place while students are in attendance. What can take place is the renovation work that has to take place in the rest of the building. And so to, to be able to say right now, in December of '22, that everything will be ready to go, including, you know, the renovations and by the fall of '25 isn't realistic. We think we'll be in a really good spot with the additions, but in terms of the rest of the building, one of the things that we'll have to continue to review is, does that mean that we can still move the sixth graders over at that time or do we need to wait until the fall of '26? So again, an aggressive timeline would be this year's third graders. A conservative timeline would be second graders, and that's what we really upfront with the community about because we didn't want to overpromise anything. But that's what we're looking at. Whenever these additions done and then when are the renovations done? And could school happen with sixth graders when just the additions are done, but not all the renovations are complete? That's something we have to continue to study, but we'll be bringing back to the board. So again, with the community, if I'm asked, this is the answer I'd give them, it's this year's second graders would be that first grade level.
Maybe that wasn't such an easy question. Can I piggyback on that just for a second? So you're saying that the addition would be done. Say we couldn't move the sixth grade there, would that addition still be usable? So would our, those students to be able to use things like the new gymnasium, items like that? Or would that still be sort of disconnected and we'd still be kind of working on the old footprint?
No, I think what you would see is that several of those areas would be accessible. And you, you pointed out a really good one, like the, like a new gymnasium, so long as that they, that can be completed and we would get the occupancy from the village. In terms of bringing everyone over there, that might not be the possibility in the fall of '25, but certainly those areas, as they open up, we wouldn't let them just sit there. We would really want to make sure that we're accessing those as much as possible. And gyms and science labs would be really good examples of, of that work. But again, we need to continue to study when those renovations could be done and to make sure that everything flows smoothly in effect. Peter, Amy, did I misspeak or?
Nope, everything's great. You just have to get our lead...
Correct, thank you.
For, okay, so my, my more challenging question would be, as it pertains to the 11 elementary buildings, and I understand it from what Peter said, that we're going to focus on four buildings in one, one year, then four buildings the following year, then three buildings in the third year. How do you prioritize that, especially when I, when I feel like we're probably going to get some feedback from the community saying, gosh, I'd really like you to, my building to be in the first, the first go-around and not the, the third go-around? How do we, how do we, how do we rank and order the buildings?
I'm going to give a short and a very long answer. So first, very carefully, right? Second, though, we are kicking around different ideas. What is not picking up momentum is like, well, we'll do the north side first or we'll do the south side first. Really, what we're focusing in on right now is an approach that would look at complexity, procurement, and then age of the facilities. And so, you know, when we talk about which schools would go first, to me, a chronological approach makes a lot of sense. I think people can understand that. Typically, your chronological buildings are going to need the most work done first. That being said, it may take several years to get some of the equipment to those older buildings because of the uniqueness of those designs. So we might be in a situation where if we can procure things faster, the younger schools might go first, like in El Ciera or a Bel Air, because, you know, they're a lot simpler type of projects than a Whittier, right? But right now, if we had to say, okay, well, how are we going to attack this with, assuming we can get everything going right away, we would be looking at... We would be looking at more of a age of the building first. I think that's the fairest way to do that. But again, we're going to lean on the advice of our architects and our construction management firm, and that's really what we've tasked them with as well, to give us some examples or, you know, what would their prioritization schedule be like? But as we speak right now, we would emphasize those older buildings first because those buildings are in the need of the most work and the most urgent work. So that's the thinking right now. But again, those are conversations that we're hashing out as we speak. So there'll be updates on those.
So we'll kind of get like weekly updates on, like, use the weekly updates kind of insight into that, those conversations?
Yeah, you're gonna, as a board, you will continually be updated on the referendum, you know, through our normal weekly update. You'll also be getting updates here at the board meeting for the public. And then also, like I said, through Megan's communication, that biweekly communication, what you can anticipate are, you know, referendum corners or something like that in those newsletters to continue to keep the community up to speed on those decisions. I think what makes this very tricky is just the ability to procure material and the supply chain issues that are still kind of plaguing the industry. And so, again, if we can get the materials, then it makes sense to do one building first. But what I can assure the community is everyone's going to understand the why behind the decisions we make. I'm not going to say everybody will always agree behind those, but our goal is to always make sure that the community can understand why we logically took that approach in terms of starting a building. One of the things that we did have good conversations about, and I appreciate both White and Bullion Andrews, is when we go into a school, we want to make sure that we get it all done in the summer. We don't want to do the HVAC and then come back the next year and then do the secured entrances because when you have to start ripping up a building, it just makes sense to do it all at once per building. So that's the approach that we're talking about. With the HVAC, though, one of the things we are also entertaining, and I can't promise anything, as we start to knock out some of these schools with air conditioning, to the greatest extent possible, how do we redeploy those window units into other schools without overloading the electrical load? So that even though some schools may get air conditioning first, we might be able to air condition more spaces than the other schools, you know, as we go through. So those that are a little later on in the batting order can at least start to also get some of that as well, again, without overloading the electrical load in the schools. But that's something that we're also looking at to make sure that we do. But again, when we talk about HVAC work, our newer buildings, Bel Air and LCR, do have functioning air conditioning in those schools. So obviously, they would be a little later on the list.
My mind's kind of a follow-up to all of that. I was going to ask for more clarity on, and I know that it's probably in the midst of discussion right now, but more clarity on why not all 11 at once and working project by project in all 11? And, you know, what are the main barriers to that? Is it project management? Is it procurement? Is it manpower? And what are the ways to overcome those three things? Because, you know, it is difficult to prioritize these four schools, then these four schools, then these three schools, you wait until the third go. That's a really hard thing to do versus, okay, HVAC is this summer and everyone's going through the HVAC process. And when we do HVAC, we have to, by nature of the way things work in a domino effect, work on the electrical because that's your base systems, right? So I would just like a better understanding when you're ready. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I'd like more understanding of that as well.
Sure. Yeah, I will say, we are wrapping up a five-year program at District 97 in Oak Park. So we've kind of learned very similar scope to this, several additions, HVAC upgrades, life safety upgrades. So we've learned a lot from that. And I think the biggest thing is, you know, you want to break it up into manageable sections. Construction in the local area during the summer months is very busy and labor is our biggest struggle. So breaking it up into manageable projects, which we feel four won't stretch the current market, so breaking it up into that is really our recommendation, four summers, four summers, three summers. And really, we want to touch one school at a time. And if we're doing four schools, we would do similar work, you know, so you're getting an economy of scale from a pricing standpoint and competitive numbers from a subcontractor standpoint. So that's really why we're recommending breaking it up into those over those three summers.
So we'd be bidding out four, then four, then three?
Correct.
It would be a bid for the three over the three year, the 11 over the three years?
Correct. You would be breaking it up, so you'd be going, bidding out summer of 2023, those four schools get in the number, then White and Company preparing documents over that next, you know, 10 months to bid the next four schools in '24 and so on.
But certainly, one of the things, again, that we continue to, you know, challenge our partners with is, you know, how do we accelerate timelines and how do we do more at once within reason? You know, again, we're trying to be very careful to be realistic with the community, but we certainly also understand the sense of urgency behind. When you pass a referendum, it's logical. People in the community want to see tangible results as soon as possible. And we definitely understand that. And so, again, we will continue to have these conversations, will continue to bring them to the Board of Education, and the board will be the ones who, you know, approve all of these bid works, all of the contracts and so on and so forth, the materials.
Yeah, consistency is kind of my main concern. Because year over year, if you're bidding, year over year, you're getting potentially different bidders, different procurement chain, different supply chains, different products, different manpower. So that's, that's one of the things that I'd like to keep an eye on because, you know, I don't want these four schools to get this and then these three schools down the line to get something completely different in their end product.
That was one of the things when I went through all the construction projects in District 181, because we couldn't build every school at the same. But it was also very important that when we got to the end, that what it looked like in one school was a very similar experience to what it looked like in another school, right? You didn't want to have completely different machines at one versus the other until, that point's very well taken.
Even just from a maintenance perspective, you know, like if we can order and have on hand, you know, similar parts and anything else like that, it makes life a lot easier for our maintenance team. You know, they've had to do a lot of miraculous work over the last several decades of trying to keep really old equipment working. I think one thing they probably appreciate is to have similar fixes, similar routines, you know, throughout, you know, throughout the district. Obviously, different buildings are different sizes, so the scope of it might be a little bit different, but, you know, similar parts, same brand, that kind of stuff, I think, is will be, at least that's the kind of stuff I've been hearing from them as we talked about it.
I agree. I think one of the other things that's nice, too, is our partners in 99 just went through a big project with White and Company, right? And a big piece of that was fully air conditioning, both high schools. And so I know 99 learned a lot from that, White learned a lot from that, and I think we can benefit from that knowledge. And the same thing with Bullion Andrews with their work in Oak Park and then Hinesville Middle School, you know, just building that new school, too, will give us a lot of information that we can deploy in our district. But again, lots of updates coming through our normal channels, but also really in those normal channels, carving out specifics for the referendum work that is taking place. I think it's very important that we have a dashboard type of approach to this work so our community, again, not only understands the why, but what can they see, even if it might not be in their home building, what's that work that's being done? And so that is the challenge that's out ahead of us and one that we are preparing for as we speak.
Question about, a lot of the focus here has been during off times when students aren't in seat. I wonder if either of you can speak to what the community should expect when students are in seat? Anything that's either visible or potentially small or large inconvenience? Just to give us a sense for what could happen during the school year, knowing that there might be some staging work that has to happen or prep work, or maybe some small work that's possible while students are coming in and out of the building?
Yeah, I can touch that. I mean, really, the middle schools will be impacted the most. The additions will be taking place throughout the school year. You know, we need to meet with the staff, make sure that during testing days, things like that, we're limiting work on site so we're, you know, minimizing a disruption to the schools. But definitely will be building those additions while schools in session. And then really, the summer months is try to do some enabling work, maybe some upfront work, investigative work during spring break, winter break. But really, those 12, 10 to 12 weeks over the summer months will be the heaviest work. And really, when students return on day one start of school, we return the school back to its normal operating, so construction being completed.
So one of the questions I was asked by Bullion Andrews, and I appreciate the question, is, you know, what's your tolerance level if a wall might just have to be patched over, but it's not painted perfectly during the school year? And, you know, so long as it's not disrupting the educational process, I encourage them to continue to do as much as they can and take advantage of that calendar. And so, again, when kids are in session, with the exception of the middle schools, you're not going to see a lot of construction, but certainly you may see, you know, patchwork from the summer work they did or the break work, you know, to look like things are under construction but not impacting our learning. But, you know, again, we really want to capture those break times. The other thing, we're having conversations about our third shifts, when it's appropriate, to have people coming in at night and then as long as the rooms are in working order that morning, you know, and as long as they're safe to do so, we want to also look at those options. And I know White and Bullion Andrews is already talking about that.
Okay. Anything else? All right. All right, that brings us to the reports to the board. The first one up is the superintendent report.
So I'm going to move personnel to the start. One of the things Jane and I work very closely on is the school calendar. And so in the superintendent's report tonight, I want to preview that school calendar, and this is also up in board docs. So what we're looking for tonight is not action. This is more of just previewing to the community and to the Board of Education what we're recommending for the school calendar next year. Any feedback we would then take and incorporate into our recommendation in January. And again, this is delayed by a month because of the referendum, but now that we know the schedule moving forward, as I spoke earlier, you can see this, you know, moving up. So just a couple of overviews in terms of the school calendar that, you know, just reminders. Illinois School Code requires 176 instructional days. Two of those days can be used for parent teacher conferences. Now, when you say two days, you can combine two evenings that would equal a day and then another two evenings in February equals a day. So that's how we get to the two full school days, if that makes sense. So think of each one of those evenings as a half day. Four teacher in-service days or institute days, those are in addition to the 176 instructional days, a school improvement day. And then again, as we talked about earlier, when we look at the calendar, we're going to be making construction adjustments, trying to extend that summer as long as we can, but also trying to maintain that close alignment with District 99. We have a number of families who have kids in both districts, and that is certainly feedback that we've consistently heard throughout the process. Also, part of our contractual obligations is to make sure that we share this with the DG EEA, and we have done so and we continue to have dialogues with our staff about that. So with that, you know, let's move into just kind of an overview. This is more just in written format. I'm going to go by this pretty quickly, and I always prefer the visual. I think that helps. And so what we're looking for next year is we would start before the school year starts with two institute days on that Monday and Tuesday. Typically, we have a third day where our teachers don't come, but our support staff comes. We're going to skip that day in the calendar next year and bring all of our staff back on the 22nd. So the teachers are already there, but bring our support staff back. So that way, we can start the year earlier by a day, and it will just help move that calendar up to end closer to Memorial Day. So we're excited, and actually, I think there's going to be a lot of benefit to having all of our staff together in the district on the 22nd. As you go into September, September really looks like a normal month with the exception of Labor Day. You will see a difference in October. We are no longer recommending during the construction season that we take Columbus Day. So we would be in attendance during Columbus Day. And again, the point behind that is to try and move the school year up as soon as possible. If you also look, we used to take things like that, half-day school improvement day and things like that. We're really trying to frontload all of those days either before the school or put them afterward, so we're not taking that during the school year. When you look at November, it's a typical November, so we'd be taking the Wednesday off prior to Thanksgiving. That's actually a compensation day for our teachers because of the evening conferences. And then as we go into the next slide, you look at December. One of the questions we got, probably the most frequent question I get about the calendar is when is winter break going to be? We're what I call the pendulum year, and we go, you know, this is the year where when the Christmas holiday falls, you can either go all the way up to the 20th or you take the week before. We have taken the week before this year, and the reason we're doing that this year is we follow 99's calendar. 99 follows the recommendation from the Regional Office of Education. Next year, District 99 has that break period. The last day of student attendance would be the 22nd. So you'd be getting more time after the Christmas holiday than you would in this year's calendar. Anecdotally, that is typically what I hear parents and families prefer. So next year, you'll see more in alignment of our traditional winter break. Again, we don't build a calendar around just, you know, the Christmas holiday, but we do get a lot of feedback around that. Then you would see January is a pretty typical month. February, again, what you would see there is, you know, you would see President's Day off because as we look through and trying to figure out all those days of parent teacher conferences, that's why you see that. March, I want to call particular attention to March because right now, we have March 19th coated in that light blue. That is the primary election day. So right now, that would be a day not in attendance. That is not something that, you know, we prefer to have to close down schools, but certainly because of security reasons, if we're having elections, we really have to do that. I do want to let the board know that the state of Illinois is considering legislation around if you are forced to have your schools serve as attendance centers, you can take a remote learning day on that day. Now, obviously, that's something that the board would have to discuss, but if we wanted to keep the continuity of instruction, that can be an option, and that would certainly be our recommendation, given the construction calendar. But again, that would be a conversation we would have. Right now, you don't have the ability to do that, so I don't want to spend too, too much time on that, but certainly we'd have to have a conversation. I think that conversation would also be informed if we have remote learning days this year to see how those go as we move forward. Because one of the things that we're not able to take advantage of is on that Friday, the first, that is the countywide institute day. And the countywide institute day is a teacher in DuPage County is something that's very valuable, especially for those courses or those subject areas that don't have a lot of partners to pair up with for professional development. So your music teachers, your art teachers, maybe some of the advanced math classes that we have in our middle school. Where that countywide institute day is a day where our teachers have the ability to go across DuPage County and meet up. So for instance, when I taught social studies, we were always at Naperville Central, and all the social studies teachers from the county would get together and do different professional development activities. So that's a day that our staff really like and we like as administrators to take advantage of, but because of this calendar, we're not able to do that because our schools have to serve as election sites. As we conclude the school year, April is pretty much a straight attendance month. And then when we get into May, you're looking at the last day of school to be Friday, the 24th, which would mean we would get out prior to Memorial Day, which I think might be a record for some time here in District 58. But that is, you know, the result of condensing some of these, but still keeping those break periods. We want to keep those break periods for not only alignment with 99, but we do think that's a chance to do a lot of pre-work for the summer work that's taking place, you know, that following summer. So with that, we'll take some questions. Again, this is not the official calendar. This is our recommended calendar, and we can take feedback and go back to the drawing board at the district office with that feedback. And Jane, I may have to ask you to help out here as well. Okay?
None? Okay.
Jane, did I forget to highlight anything on this? Okay, all right. So that is the personnel section of the superintendent's report. And again, we will be codifying that with the recommendation at the January 9th board meeting. All right, so as I get back into my superintendent's report, for curriculum and instruction, as we conclude the calendar year, one of the things that the district office is going to be working on are staffing and programmatic recommendations for the upcoming school year. One of the things that we stated we were going to look heavily at if the referendum passed was full-day kindergarten, and that work really is ongoing right now. So we plan to meet with our teachers and principals during the month of January. We also are having budget meetings over winter break to make sure that this could be a doable thing. But I would anticipate, if all goes well with those conversations, coming back to the Board of Education around the curriculum workshops in February and then in March with of Education around the curriculum workshops in February and then in March with the recommendation, if we're able to do that instructionally and if we're able to do that with our budget. Again, that is our goal. And I know that we may have some parents asking that question right now. So if anyone is listening out there, we want to meet with our teachers in January, but we anticipate making that recommendation prior to spring break. Okay? We're gonna skip finance because we just did the budget hearing and all of that. In terms of technology, one of the things that we are trying to deploy because it's a cost-saving measure and it's also a paper-saving measure is a product called PaperCut. The name is interesting, but what, what PaperCut does is it, before you print anything, it's a FOBS system. So you don't just print from your computer and it, you know, spits it all out. You have to go and you have to, to thob it in. Researchers really showed that that helps reduce a lot of the costs and it's something we've been using at the district office for about six months now and using it very well. When we deployed it out to the buildings, the rollout did not go as smoothly from the company as we had hoped, even though we did have some guarantees. So we're working through those. I want to commend Jane, or excuse me, James and all of our teachers. We've had some struggles with that and I think it's important that we point out, we've had some struggles with that. Nothing that I would say on our end, but again, with the company, it just didn't roll out as well as we had hoped, like it did at the district office. And so we're focusing in on that. But if it can't work to the level that we need it, we'll be seeking a refund and we will wait till the summer to redeploy similar software. So that's where we're at right now with that. But again, we think it's a, a very good approach to not only the environment but from a cost perspective, but it does have to work consistently in order for us to utilize it. So James has spent a ton of time, you know, after hours on this one and we appreciate his hard work. This is something we want to make work, but it does have to work well in order for us to do it. Next up for student services, even though we're in the winter, we're already planning for extended school year. And so I want to thank Jessica and her team. So you're gonna start to see a lot of stuff coming out for summer school and extended school year. And so if people have questions about that, they should be contacting their building principal. But we will also be posting information. Then of course, for anyone interested in working summer school, we'll have lots of opportunities coming up here. In terms of public relations, this is one of the, the greatest things about being in Downers Grove. We have so many organizations that are out there willing to help our families. So I want to just take some time to recognize a lot of the organizations that have been donating to our students in need and our families in need. We have St. Joseph Knights of Columbus. We also have the Community Christian Church of Downers Grove, the EM5 Foundation, Sharing Connection, Stitches to Share and the Downers Grove Moose Lodge. They contributed a variety of clothing and other winter wear. So we're very helped with that. Helping Hands Group has personally done 60 coats. So we're very happy with that as well. St. Joseph's Giving Tree Program and the Downers Grove Junior Women's Club and Downers Grove Roadrunner Soccer Club has also donated how to gifts for over 124 individual District 58 students. Emmanuel Lutheran provided Thanksgiving meals to 41 District 58 families. And they'll also provide holiday meals to, I believe, 44 District 58 families. Good Shepherd Church has also been donating groceries, gats, gift cards and many other things. And then finally, the blessings and backup program at all of our elementary schools with our PTAs has done a great job. And then we have student councils and PTA programs also helping fund those in need. We're very fortunate to have such a supporting community during a time when many people do have needs. And so that's meant a lot to us. The Education Foundation is also bringing back the Harlem Wizards. So please mark your calendar for January 15th at 6:00 PM. It's always a fun night. The Harlem Wizards come and they, you know, they'll face a very challenging team of District 58. I think we're gonna put up a good show this year. Mr. Lynn's gonna lead us on that. So we'll see how that goes. But, you know, every time I play the Wizards, we've lost, but maybe this is our year. What do you think, Jason?
See.
But it's a great opportunity to come out with the kids and support the Education Foundation. And again, that will be at Downers Grove South High School at 6:00 PM. And it's a Sunday at Martin Luther King Weekend. So we're, we're looking forward to that.
We love the confidence, by the way.
In terms of facilities, we've had a very challenging couple of weeks. We tend to have challenges this time of year when we transition from warmer weather to colder weather. You start firing up a lot of the heating equipment. We tend to get a lot of, you know, issues from piping or coils breaking and things like that. I just want to personally thank our maintenance team, our custodian team, Jeff Newstad, Kevin Bardo, the amount of work that they have done over the weekends and at night to make sure that our kids can have school has been really extraordinary. And I want to publicly thank them for that work because we have had significant issues at Fairmount. We've had issues at O'Neal. We've had issues at Lester. We've also had issues at Herrick. Kind of underscores the urgency for the referendum as well. But without these individuals, we have two situations in two of the schools where we might not have been able to have school the next day. But again, just pitching in and making sure we're able to do that. So we want to thank them again for their work. And then finally, on behalf of all of us, we want to wish everyone happy holidays and we hope you enjoy winter break. It's hard to believe that Friday, it will be here. It's a very joyous time for so many of us and so many of us have more blessings than we can count. But we also recognize that it's a challenging time for so many of our students and so many of our families. So if there's anyone that's in need or you know of anyone in need, I would encourage anyone to counsel their, or excuse me, to contact their school's social worker. You can also contact the district office, Megan Hewitt, and we'd be happy to point you in the right direction to get you the assistance that you need. So again, happy holidays, everyone, and enjoy winter break. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No.
Fantastic. All right, Todd, you're up again. We have now the monthly business and treasures report.
It's not that bad, Todd.
Well, if you look at the agenda, we have a number of things. It just happens to be one of those meetings where we've got a lot of business items up. Cover the year-to-date report real quick. You have your year-to-date report in front of, you know, in, in the packet. We went through this at the, the financial advisory committee. Just as a, things are going as expected. A, one, one person pointed out and asked about the supply material budget in the education fund. That is where we had expended and paid for the iPads that we received and paid for in, in July. We received federal funding for a majority of that out of a grant program. Those actually, when we, and we will have to amend the budget at, at the end of the year because we've had the referendum. We're going to receive funds and so forth and we'll have different expenditures in the capital fund. So that will require an amendment. We'll also make an adjustment in this piece that it is moved. Actually, because we took possession of the iPads in, in May or June, they're in actually the audit. On a cash basis, we got the bill in July and we paid it and received the revenue in fiscal year '23. But in actuality, because we took possession, those items are in fiscal year '22's audit. So it's listed as such. The other thing I, I want to, you have on the agenda, the tax levy that we had the truth in taxation notice for. There's a new law that came into place or that the legislature passed this year that it's, it's not as specific as we would like to have exactly to understand what we were to do. But it talks about needing that a discussion of fund balance occur when the board approves the budget and the tax levy on an annual basis. Takes effect, I think, January. Know that as part of the budget, the fund balance is in there at that time and that every month, the, the board has a fund balance and a cash position of where we're at, at the end of the previous month. We included it in the memo introduction piece with the table as to what the fund balance is as of June, I'm sorry, as of November 30th, just as a piece to connect it with the tax levy to cover the, the law. But know that that is something that the district does as a, you know, as a course of business every month and is available and certainly. So I wanted to cover that piece. You have on your agenda, a number of items for that. We've talked about the donations that the community has been hard at work and, and parents have been raising money and doing a whole bunch of things. Kevin Bardo's been working with all these groups as to how much is available in equipment and so forth and the budget. And, you know, we appreciate all of that and all of their efforts. That, and then how much that is, you saw the table as to what that means to that playground piece. Those items were not, were in the master facility plan, but not included in the referendum. So there had to be funding from some place coming for those pieces. The other action item, the, the item you have on your agenda is the draft audit. And we have Betsy Ellen from Miller Cooper here to talk to that. Just as a reminder piece, the board doesn't approve the audit because it's an independent third-party audit. You accept it from the auditor. And we've concluded that process. And so bring Betsy up if you want to add. You want to come up?
So you may go now?
Sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. Regarding the audit process and how, you know, we've, we've worked through that. So, and I would also note that the audit, you know, is, also has revenue over expenditures as we showed in the cash position. There is adjustments because of, you know, some of the federal funding and so forth. But, you know, we, we still ended up in a positive position.
You're up.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So I just want to quickly go over a few items in the, in the draft financial statements. Once you accept the draft, there really should not be any changes unless you had questions on something that needed to change. And then we'll work with Todd this week to get this released and filed with the State Board of Education by the 15th of December. So there's three deliverables we're just gonna look at tonight real quick. The annual financial report, which is about financial statements. And then we have a required communication to the board letter and our management letter. So I just, I want to point out just a few items in, in the, in the annual financial report. A couple of things this year. One of the big new GASB statements, GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And they, the new GASB 87 came out, which was implementation of lease, of the lease standard. So we did work with the district to, there's some added disclosures and some added reporting for, for the leases that we did. Also, something you really wouldn't see in the report, but we do report the TRS pension liability each year in your report. TRS puts out an allocation report every year that we use to calculate some of the other assumptions and also to pull other contributions and also the TRS li, pension liability from. It was discovered that there was some kind of error in their report, which stuck out that some districts had negative contributions that at times was leading to a pension asset for TRS. And we pretty much know that nobody has a pension asset with, with TRS. We as a firm and talking to some other firms too, decided that unless we had a district that had enough pension asset, we did not go through the whole recalculation to make another estimate and other estimate. So because it's a cost-sharing plan, if somebody's number isn't quite right in it, it's possible that the estimate of yours is not quite right. But from calculations we did, there was nothing material that was gonna, gonna change. So we used the numbers that came from TRS. And TRS was, is aware of this issue and they made the decision to leave the report as is. So hopefully next year, they will get on that and get it corrected. So in, in the copy of the annual financial report, the one thing you will not have in a draft is our independent audits report. That's our opinion on the financial statements. We do not put that in the draft of the financial statements. It is this year, though, again, an unmodified, clean opinion that we will be issuing with the financial statements. And pages six through 14 of the document is a management's discussion and analysis. I always tell people who are not, don't like to read a bunch of financial statements, that if you just want an overview of the financial statements, the MDA is a great place to go. It's written by management and reviewed by us. It does have a lot of financial highlights in it. It gives an overview of the financial statements that are in the, that are in the, in the document. It also gives condensed financial statements as well as some factors that will bearing on the district's future. I know Todd did end up putting some stuff in on the, on the referendum to have that out there and ready to go.
Can you pause just one for a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't see the full audit on this meeting. I have it from the FAC meeting, but I don't have, like, we have the recommendation document and we have the...
Was it on the agenda for FAC?
Yes.
We can include it.
All right. Then I can put it on right now. Maybe I have a different copy.
We'll go ahead and repost that. So it's on there then?
It's marked as incomplete. Is that the same one you want?
One moment. No, because I have one that says final draft.
On Friday, we sent out a, like, a draft. It actually says draft, not the one you saw at the...
At the FAC?
Yeah.
So Todd, were you sending it to Melissa? Then Melissa can post that updated one?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there was nothing...
I think I asked this question last. We used to get...
Physical copies, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we haven't issued the final copy yet. And so that's why it's just in dra, it's just in draft form right now. And so those bound copies come after the, after the final one is issued.
I understand we just accept, but I mean, it is nice for us to have an opportunity to go, especially to the...
Sorry. I didn't know you didn't have it.
Yeah, no. And I went through all this already. And so like, I, you know, and I should, I should have caught it earlier. I, I didn't. So I want to pause. I want to make sure before we continue that everyone has at least an opportunity to open, because you're referencing...
Page numbers, yeah.
Page numbers in that, in that one key section. So I want to make sure everyone's getting an opportunity to see.
And for the, for your finance committee, there was nothing that changed between the product you saw on Friday morning to the one that I sent out Friday afternoon.
And when you and I spoke, you had alluded that you didn't expect anything to change. So I wasn't overly concerned about it. But, yeah, no.
All right, Melissa, you have it now.
It's loading?
I don't have it yet.
Okay. Oh.
See, it's too many pages.
It's, well, then I stripped it.
Board docs are very slow, too, right?
Okay.
Are you gonna put that under 16B?
Yes. Okay. You'll have to refresh.
Yeah, you'll have to refresh your screen from board docs, which will kick you back out. Go back in. It should be there.
I don't see it yet. Did it finish up, though?
I replaced.
Oh, that's this. Okay.
Yeah. So the second one that says Downers Grove School District 58, '22.
I expected a third document to pop in.
Draft.
All right.
It's still gonna say draft because it's not.
No, the draft part is fine. All right, perfect. Thank you.
We good?
For your patience. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Sorry about that. So if you have the document again, so like I said, I think pages six through 14, I said was a management discussion and analysis. That is a document to go read of, you just want an overview of the financial statements. There's condensed financial statements. And there's also a fin, some information which we refer to as factors bearing on the district future. So good, that financial implic, implicate, why can't I say that word tonight? Implications. So there's just a, a number of items that are listed in that section too. So then, starting on page 15, 15 through 23 are what we refer to as the basic financial statements. Starting at page 18 is the fund income statement of the district. That's probably more the income, the statements that you're used to seeing on a, on a monthly basis. As Todd did, report that you did end up with an increase of your fund balance, about $481,000 to about 35.5 million. A lot of that increase in the fund balance was due to the sale of the Longfellow School. Then on pages 24 through 73, those are the notes to the financial statements. Here you're going to see the summaries and the accounting policies of the district. And there's also a number of pages, more detailed information explaining the numbers that are in the basic financial statements on the cash and investments of the district, the capital assets, the debt of the district. There's also a number of pages on the pension liabilities, which are for TRS and IMRF, as well as the OPEB. OPEB are your other post-employment benefit liabilities. And that is the THIS, which is the health insurance part of TRS along with your retiree health plan that you hold. And then rounding out the end... And then rounding out the end of the report, starting on page 74, the remaining sections of the documents are the required supplementary information and supplementary information. Here you're going to see some multi-year schedules on the pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities, and on the contributions to those plans. You also see budgetary schedules for each of the funds maintained by the district. Those schedules include the current year budget compared to the current year actual, and we also present the FY '21 actual numbers for comparison purposes. And then the final schedule in the document, there is a, there is a schedule of principal and interest payments on the dates that they are due for each of your outstanding, each of your outstanding bond obligations. Then we also have our two letters that we issued. One of them is our, first one is our required communication to the board letter. Here it states that we've done our audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, also in accordance with government auditing standards, which is required by the State Board of Education, and also in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance is a single audit. Since a district expends more than $750,000 in federal funds, it is required to have a single audit performed. And this year, our testing was done actually on the new fund, the Emergency Connectivity Fund, that you received money for, that Todd had referenced a few minutes ago. Page two of the letter talks about the GASB statements that were adopted this year. We talked about GASB 87. The other statements that were effective for the district this year really did not have any, did not have any significant impact on the district at all. The next section of the letter shows the GASB statements that will be applicable in future years. Many of them will not be, be applicable or effective for the district, but we do list all of them. Next year, GASB 96, which is a subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is sort of a takeoff of the lease standards, but for subscription-based technology, will be effective, so we will start working with the district early in the year to make sure we start gathering the information needed to implement that. Again, this year, we did have no difficulties in completing the audit. I want to thank Todd and his entire staff for their help during the audit and getting this out timely this year. And then when we do get ready to release this report, we will have management sign our management representation letter, and then file all the required filings with the State Board of Education and the single audit as, as soon as we, as soon as we release the report. The last letter that we, that we have issued is our, our management letter. We are not reporting any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We had a few items that were just control deficiencies in regard to some certain matters. I have talked to Todd, and he will be providing his management responses to the board on these, on these matters. We also have in here a, just a comment or a management advice, we call it, in regards to technology and data risk security. It has, we put this in all of our clients and all of our corporate clients' reports, and it's really just more of a reminder, just to ensure that you're always staying up on your technology and looking at your data risk security. You know, we do look at certain things, and that passwords are being used, but we certainly don't do a, a data security risk audit at all. But don't take this at all that we're saying there's anything wrong with your data security risk or technology. We just want you to remember to always be, you know, staying, staying on top of that.
And just one thing to piggyback off, that is something that Dr. Agmiller is, you know, continually looking at in terms of not only things like our password security, but an audit of the entire system to ensure that we're as protected as we possibly can be as a school district.
And like I said, that's, the point of our comment, too, is just to, just as a reminder, not to say that there's anything that they're doing wrong, that you're doing wrong in the district.
When you, you mentioned that there, you have pointed out some weaknesses or deficiencies. Where in the document do you list those?
That, I don't, that's in the letter that I've got, that's a letter you don't have yet.
Okay.
So...
So Todd will share that with you.
We'll share that, and then we'll put, we'll put, we'll give that to the board with then what we're doing. We like, we like to, we like to address and go through those with the auditor, and then put through our process, so we will send you our response of what we're doing to cover all of those things.
But the board will receive the full copy of all of it.
And like I said, there was no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. That's sort of, you know, the higher level deficiencies that we have. There were just a few minor things that we wanted to point out to the district and...
And if I use the wrong, the wrong terminology?
No.
I didn't mean, and I...
Some of it's specific to how we deposited and journal entryed in some of the federal funds and how they came in, and doing, you know, and categorizing those things as they, you know, because some different formats, so those are some of the pieces. And then some of the depreciation and how we need to verify when we're deleting, we sold like a couple of vehicles that had a value of $5,000 and taking them off the list and so forth with our capital assets.
And something else, Todd, and I have talked about in the last couple of days, is in regard to the capital assets and the accounting, just with all your projects that you're going to start having and getting together sooner rather than later to make sure that we, that the district has a good system set up to start tracking these projects, because you're going to end up reporting a lot of construction in progress for the next three years. I've been, I've been listening tonight that this is going to take three years or so, you know, so there'll be a lot of construction in progress and then stuff moving to be depreciated. So I think it's really important that the district stay on top of that and make sure they get a good accounting going now to keep track to those capital assets. So does anyone have any questions or anything else that we want to discuss?
I appreciate it so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And then Todd, does that conclude?
That is all we have, unless you have questions.
We do, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to the committees. First up, the Policy Committee did not meet since the last board meeting, but the Legislative Committee did. They met on December 7th, so remember, Hannes?
Yeah, we had a pretty brief meeting on the 7th. Mostly, we spent our time talking about the upcoming legislative breakfast, which is going to be held early February. We spent a little smart time talking about the formatting of that breakfast and kind of bouncing back ideas back and forth in terms of what we found kind of most valuable over the past couple of years and how we can tile that together for this legislative breakfast in terms of large panel discussion versus small group discussion with all the legislators that we're going to be able to bring to the breakfast. I think as of now, or as of that meeting, and we, I think we had around five confirmed legislators who are going to be in attendance, but we haven't heard from everyone, so we're kind of waiting to see. So it should be, it looks as though we're going to have, you know, a very nice turnout for the breakfast, as we always have, and we kind of settled on keeping a similar format that we used last year, where we had a large panel discussion in the beginning, where all the legislators will have a chance to respond to one or two questions that they will all, you know, the same question that will get to hear from everyone on, and then break up into those small groups again and have, you know, more of a discussion, back and forth, conversational dialogue between the people who are attending and the legislators. We did talk a lot about how we can extend the question-and-answer portion for both the larger and the smaller, because that seemed like, from the feedback from last year, that was the biggest thing, that everyone just wanted a little bit more time to hear from the legislators who were there. So we've talked a lot about trying, like, shortening the early meet and greet mingle period a little bit, perhaps starting a little bit earlier for people who want to come and mingle more, they can come a little bit earlier, and then beginning the actual more presentation part of the breakfast earlier at like 7:30 as opposed to 7:45 or 8 o'clock, as we've done in the past. So trying to just give a little bit more time for hearing from legislators. And that was pretty much it. We didn't, you know, next, our next meeting is going to be focusing on the questions for the legislators and the topics themselves, and so this was more format-based. Kevin, if I...
Yeah, no, the only other thing I would add is that date is February 3rd. The official start would be 7:30. It would conclude at 9:00. Once again, that's February 3rd, and obviously we'll be putting that out to the board. Emily, I think you, you summarized everything perfectly, so. The only other add, Emily, we did check out that February 3rd date, just to make sure that that didn't, you know, really, it wouldn't cause legislators not to be there, because they technically are in session. I know Megan reached out to Representative Terracosta, however, we got some good feedback that they don't believe that that would impact attendance on that day. So I think we're good to go with the 3rd. Of course, we will have a snow date, just in case on those days. I believe that's the 17th. Is that correct, Megan? And, yeah, so on to that, we're moving forward on it.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, that brings us to the Financial Advisory Committee, which met last Friday, December 9. My report's going to be rather boring, because it's sort of been the whole focus of this meeting today, but we did go over the Year Today Report. We did have some, that's always a great opportunity for us to talk about, because it's a good group of people that will take a look at. Our Year Today Report always shows where we are percentage-wise for the year, so it gives us an opportunity to kind of see if anything's on the line and have a short conversation about it. We spent a lot of time talking about the bond sale. Not only the bond sale now, what is the number at, 129?
The total collection, total amount that we will receive at the end of the month is $140 million. We sold $125 million a par, and the remainder is premium, which is where someone gives you a hun, you know, more than, more than the cost, or more than the value of the bond.
So we've expended 125 at this point, so we can go up to 179. So we expect within the next two to three years, it will go out for the, for the rest of that. One of the conversations we had was, at what point in the window should we start looking at, start paying attention to those bond rates? Because there's going to be a period of time where when you take, we have five years to go out and take the bonds, and then we have three years to spend them once we take them. So we've now, we've done the first part of it. So there's going to be a window that'll start at some point that we know that we'll be able to spend the remainder of the money within, within the, within a three-year period, but we don't necessarily need to grab it yet. So it's important to, to, there's going to be a window where we start looking and making sure that we're looking for favorable bond rates and those kind of things. So we had, we had some nice conversation around that. We also did spend some time on the fiscal year audit as well. We went through some of the sections, and we talked about a lot of the same stuff that you heard here, where we got a little bit more detail. We really talked about that, that main opening sec, section. And then we talked about the capital work this summer and a little bit about the timeline, the timeline that we reviewed today on construction, as well as our fut, our future for capital planning. So really all the stuff that we kind of touched on today, but it was really nice to get the perspective from the Advisory Council. Any comments?
No, sir.
Any questions? All right, then that concludes my report. The district leadership team met on November the 21st.
Yeah, I'll do a quick overview of the things that weren't touched on today, and then Kevin, if there's things you want to add in as I, as I talk to them, please feel free to. Goal one, curriculum and learning, we focused on the outstanding KPIs and the work that's coming up next, past academic efficiency and growth. The other KPIs that come up are things like collaboration and critical thinking that we've talked about, and how to set the right targets for, for those KPIs. That work is going to be ongoing through committee work, the Curriculum Council will be, will be doing that. On goal two, we got an update about community members that have been placed into various board and district committees. So we have 15 new community members that applied and were placed into various committees across the district. And in particular, the Superintendent Community Advisory Council will be weighing in on both the referendum execution planning and the strategic plan that's coming up. And so on that strategic plan, Kevin walked us through a draft timeline for what we can expect. He's going to be presenting to the board on the strategic plan steps, and so that was a helpful preview for us to get a sense for, as we all know, that the past strategic plan has now expired, and we will go through the process now of, now that we know the referendum has passed, on what comes next. And so Kevin walked us through the steps, including community engagement and otherwise to, to land that strategic plan. Kevin, feel free to weigh in on that, if there's anything else you wanted to share before I share other updates.
Yeah, no, just a general reminder that the strategic plan is coming near its conclusion, and so we will be seeking community engagement and feedback on a new strategic planning process. In late December, early January, we have targeted to send out requests for proposals for strategic planning. So as we get those in, you know, what we're really looking to do is to seek board approval, either at the February, March of that RFP, Request for Proposal, and, you know, what you can anticipate is post-spring break, between then and June, is finalizing those big key areas of the strategic planning process, and then our team would work and fine-tune that over the summer, and then bring that completed work back to you next fall. So we're really excited for this work. It's a lot of work, but certainly something that I think this board and the community have demonstrated, that if you have a really good strategic plan, you can get a lot done. And that is certainly what we're, you know, targeting for and looking forward to getting that work done. So again, between now and spring break, we'll be identifying that group or person that's going to help us with the strategic planning process and those key areas, and then post-spring break, we'll be really completing that work, and then the summer projects, we'll be fine-tuning all of that and then bring it to the board for next fall.
On goal, thanks for that, Kevin. On goal three, we had, there was a lot that was already talked about today, so I won't retouch on that. One thing that we didn't talk about today was the update on the Shared Village and District Administrative Center that's happening outside of our, outside of our meeting today. That work continues to go on schedule, it'd be on schedule, and completion is expected to happen in the first quarter of 2024, with the district moving into that space in the third quarter of 2024. So that was a good update to hear. Well, we talked a lot about upcoming construction projects. These are existing construction projects that the village will benefit from for years to come. And then Kevin touched on this a bit earlier, but just wanted to name, we talked about the visioning sessions that the community will have an opportunity to engage in, and the Superintendent Advisory Council will, Community Advisory Council will be providing the administration some guidance on how to structure those visioning sessions that will happen in early 2023. But all, as we think about all these projects that, you know, White Company and Bullion Andrews have been supporting, will be supporting us with, there will be opportunities for individual school communities, particularly the ones that are impacted most by traffic changes and large expansions in their neighborhoods, will have an opportunity to weigh in, and the community as a whole have opportunity to weigh in on key topic areas as we think about changes to school buildings and changes to the middle schools and things that they want to see, and weigh in on as, as a form of input. So we're excited about those, and it was, it was helpful to hear the thoughtful planning that's going on to think about how to structure those sessions in a way that's an appropriate entry point for a community member that both may be actively involved in the work that we're doing, but also the community members that have just heard about this news and are starting to want to ask questions. And so looking forward to those sessions in early 2023. And that's the update. Any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, last up, we have the Health and Wellness Committee, Vice President Harris. You guys met on December 8.
Thank you. I, I think the last time I gave an update was maybe at the October meeting, right before we voted on the premium increases, and I gave a rather sanguine update on the health of our, of our plan in calendar year 2022, and that's been revised in a more negative way. Unfortunately, our expected, we're still expected to have a surplus, which just won't be quite as, as robust based on the way the market is, is performing right now. And the outlook for 2023 is, is also, you know, not very rosy. There are certain market pressures that are impacting the, the health insurance market. One of them is prescription costs, the other one is hospitals, the nursing staff at hospitals, they are, they're, there's a shortage of nurses, and it's going, the, the hospitals are finding themselves having to increase their, their salaries and benefits for their nurses in order to retain them, and that's, so that's going to be impacting the market across the nation, so that's something to brace ourselves for if we look forward to the next calendar year. One good thing that I, that I think is a minor celebration is the, our HSA plan, we effectively have two plans, the University PPL plan and we have the HSA plan. The HSA plan is four years old, or thereabouts, Todd?
Yeah, that's correct.
And this is, we, our, we just went through open enrollment. Our, our membership on that plan has increased by 67% this year, which is great, and that's, you know, the, 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 the committee is really excited about that, because they, you know, the sentiment of the committees, this is, this is good for, for some of our members who, for the members who this makes sense for, this is a good, this is a good option for them. And it's, for the board, it's a good option, too, that helps us control our costs and helps us to provide good benefits for our, for our staff without breaking the bank. And last thing, just as we, as we completed that meeting, we just kind of discussed about looking into the future and how this committee is going to meet. We have been meeting mostly on a monthly basis. We have been meeting mostly on a monthly basis for the past couple of years. I think we're going to go to every other month going forward, maybe five or six times through the school year and then, so just, we'll still have data that the board can review on a regular, on a monthly basis, but maybe fewer updates for me, but not too many fewer, but just a couple.
Wonderful. Questions or comments? Thank you, Greg. All right, we have no discussion items tonight, so that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. The board has allotted 30 minutes tonight. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Do we have any cards tonight? Okay, so we don't have any cards, but I will open the floor if there's anyone here who would like to make a public comment. Okay. All right, so that brings us now to the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2022 meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2022 regular meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st curriculum workshop as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 curriculum workshop as presented. We have our consent agenda. Is there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel, yeah, personnel report and financial statements and consisting of the list of bills and summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. All right, our recommendations for action, the first thing up is our 2022 Certificate of Levy. Is there a motion to adopt the 2022 Certificate of Levy in the amount of $66,315,000?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to adopt the 2022 Certificate of Levy in the amount of $66,315,000. Next up is the Fiscal Year 2022 Audit Report. Is there a motion to accept the Fiscal Year 2022 Audit Report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to accept the Fiscal Year 2022 Audit Report as presented. We have a recommendation for purchase, the Navigate 360, the Alice Training, which is for Alice Training, to purchase that. Is there a motion to approve the three-year contract with Navigate 360 for a total cost of $31,550?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the three-year contract with Navigate 360 for a total cost of $31,550. Next up is the Raptor Visitor Management System. Is there a motion to approve the three-year contract with Raptor for a total cost of $41,548?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just a question on, when are we intending on implementing?
So that implementation, we're looking at March, April implementation date after we've trained our secretaries, after we've clearly communicated, excuse me, to the community, how different it is going to be. In reality, we are more than likely going to target that spring break date. It's always a good time to implement something new after break period. So that is the tentative timeline that we're working under.
The only thing added to that, it's okay, is it might be one or two buildings that come in earlier than us testing.
To test out.
As a pilot.
Thank you for that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the three-year contract with Raptor for a total cost of $41,548. Next up is the donation agreement from Kingsley PTA. Is there a motion to approve the donation agreement between Kingsley PTA and the board for $19,931.40 for playground construction?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I just want to say that for those who haven't maybe gone through this before, this is how we, we just accept these donations because they cannot bid on projects and stuff directly, so that's always done by us. So this is money that we just take as a pass-through to go towards the playground projects that we're working on. So we have several of them tonight.
And then Darren, I know we had a representative from Kingsley who had to leave, but before we go through all of these, I just, on behalf of the board, want to thank everyone for their hard work. Kevin, Bart Olver as well, having all the meetings and Todd with all these playground groups, we're very appreciative of all of their hard work and just the countless fundraisers and the evenings out to restaurants and all of that. It's a lot and we really appreciate everything they do.
I'm piggybacking on that. Thanks to the community for all the support for all the schools going through the process. Excellent work by everybody involved.
Agreed. Takes a village of Downers Grove. All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the donation agreement between Kingsley PTA and the board for $19,931.40 for playground construction. Next up is the donation agreement from Pierce Downer PTA. Is there a motion to approve the donation agreement between Pierce Downer PTA and the board for $140,000 for playground construction?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that one? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the donation agreement between Pierce Downer PTA and the board for $140,000 for playground construction. Next up is the donation agreement for Indian Trail. Is there a motion to approve the donation agreement between Indian Trail PTA and the board for $30,000 for playground construction?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to, motion carried to approve the donation agreement between Indian Trail PTA and the board for $30,000 for playground equipment. Last up in the donations is the donation agreement between Belair PTA. Is there a motion to approve the donation agreement between Belair PTA and the board for $40,000 for playground construction?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the donation agreement between Belair PTA and the board for $40,000 for playground construction. Next up, we have a construction consent agenda. Moving forward, we're going to have a second consent agenda on our, here for any of the construction projects. So our, as I always do with the other consent agenda, is there any item that a board member would like to have considered separately?
Just the DLZ of the survey, just one more question on it.
All right. The, the middle school top, yeah, okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda consisting of, of the playground equipment purchases for BCI Burke for Lester, Kingsley, Belair, and Indian Trail and the playground equipment purchase for the landscape structures for Pierce Downer?
So moved.
Sorry, is this aye or is this?
Second.
This is the motion right now. All right, Melissa, will you please go roll?
Sorry, I'm sorry, where is the second?
I was the second.
Okay. Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried for the consent agenda with the exception of item A, the middle school topographical survey proposal, and it has been approved as amended in the packet of materials. Next up, is there a motion to approve the middle school topographical survey proposal?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just a, just a general question on, there's three proposals that came in, a pretty broad range of about $23,000 in difference between the three, so just curious why we think there was such a broad, that's pretty, that's a pretty big for such a small amount of work.
Yeah, Kevin.
So, we typically do see quite the range in survey work. I don't know why that is, but whether it's playground work or parking lots or anything like that, having experience with all these firms with White, we know that these are reliable sources and we felt comfortable in that low bid numbers. You know, sometimes that low bid number concerns, in this case, it does not at all.
Okay, great, thank you so much.[1607.62]